All right, I think I am live, live, live. Hello Zen friends. Welcome to a special, extra, extra special Saturday night evening session, where I'm coming back on to finish out all of the readings from the earlier session. You'll see there's no chat in the session. I'm not taking any new questions. I'm just finishing up the ones from the earlier session. I will complete the donations, all my YouTube channel members and the remaining free readings too. I had like maybe 10, so we'll, we'll do those and um. What else, what else? So you'll see there's no chat, I already said that. Well, in the description box of the video, I do have the order in which the readings will be completed. After I'm done, I will also post a comment, pin it and it'll have the order, but the timestamps will be next to it too. So we'll be doing that. I will be back, like I said, tomorrow. I don't know if I said that already. I'll be back tomorrow at 11 a.m. Mountain Time for more readings. So you could join me then if you have additional questions you'd like to ask Spirit. Yeah, so we will, we'll dive into that. So up first, we're going to have Chloe Jade. And thank you guys so much for all your patience in getting to your readings as well. I know it takes a little bit to get through the donations and those. It is how I eat and how I survive, not how we survive. Spirit is how I survive Creator, but it's how I fund my food. That's the important thing, right? So Chloe, thank you for your donation via Z Venmo. And we will also, I got your email, so thank you for that. And that's good, you know, I, I understand, you know, it's good. It was definitely a connection that's important for you because it was a spark to give you new hope and new energy too. And that's good, you know, it is good energy. And then, but you wanted to find out about this other person too. And uh, never been romantic, right? Closer to your age, oh, I know, we're getting old, aren't we? I'm, I just turned 58, so you know, but you feel a lot for him. And you know, he adores you. Well, who wouldn't Chloe, who would? But let's see what the cards say about these two. Or if there's a third, something else, right? So let's take a look here, let's dive in. So we'll look at the first individual that you had met, the past lifer, right? So we'll take a look here. All right, what do we need to know about them? Okay, do you feel like these underneath? Oh wow, right, boom, boom, boom. All right, and then for this older gentleman. All right, boom, boom, what else do we have here? Okay. And then what else do you need to know? Is there a third option, something else to look out for? What does Spirit want you to know here? All right, and that one there, and that one there, okay. Yeah, well, we do have, the bottom of the deck is the Nine of Pentacles. The Nine of Pentacles is my hermit card, being hermited from the outside world. So there is this time, you know, and, and I, I see that even underneath that you have the Emperor energy, which is about you being the emperor of your empire and you deciding what it is that you want to do without the opinion and the expectations. Really a clearing away period and I like this for you because there is this energy of, how would you say, deciding what you want, putting a plan together and you taking action. So this really is, you know, like it, it's lonely at the top is what I heard. And it's like, I'm the emperor, well, you know, but then the emperor, you know, does of course, want to take a partner on to rule the empire. Emperor, Empress, you know, there's always that divine counterpart energy. So I like that for you. So that's kind of the underlying energy is like, yeah, 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 you know, these are extra. They're not your life. Someone that comes into your life is an addition or an expression that gets to share your life, but they're not your life. You are creating your life. So I like that energy. All right, so let's talk about this other person that you, number one, we'll call him person number one. So you have the Knight of Cups, yeah, got the emotions moving, which was a big piece of their purpose was to allow you to see that I can love again. And it's not going to be replacing Benjamin, but it is this energy of I can. And I do have permission to love and to love again and love as many times as I want. It'll, at the core, the love we experience is the love in here. It's not, didn't come from the outside. That person allowed you to help feel that love within you. But the love was in here and we can regenerate different types of love. But it's, it comes from in here, right? So I like that, that this was an important part to ignite emotion within you. Got the Page of Wands, oh, more than just emotion, huh? A little bit of passion. You're like, hey, it's been a while. I get it, I get it. So there's a little bit of sparks that sparked throughout our, all of our chakras, right? So we like that. And the Magician. Again, this sparking energy. And the magician is an energy of showing you your abilities. This is your higher self being a conduit of bringing this love energy through you into the world. And I like this too, because it shows, shows you your power. Your power of whatever you focus your energy on is what can grow and expand. But there's this, very much this empowerment. I love this confidence, this divine masculine energy that you have too, that allowed you to get in connection with that, you know, that you are divine feminine, but you also have a divine masculine side. And I like that energy that was ignited through this, yeah, and the Nine of Cups. It allowed you to have hope for a dream come true, you know. But I also like that they brought you this awareness and going, okay, you know, I know more of what I'm wanting from someone too. Because of course, there's all sorts of stuff, you know, I mean, like if they want children and we're not able to have children or whatever, they can get a surrogate that can carry the baby and blah, 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 and all this kind of stuff. We're like, no, you don't want that either. You're like, okay, thank you, bye. You know, let's see with the underlying energy, what else Spirit wanted to know about this? Yeah, again, the Two of Cups. There is past life connection, but the Two of Cups, I, I just definitely feel here with that Knight of Cups and the Two of Cups, that this was about allowing hope to return of finding love a different, you know, and a reflection of the love in the outside world for you, right? Because the Two of Cups is a mirror energy too. It does tell us that all of our relationships in the outside world are reflective of the love that we have inside of us, right? So we can learn and we can reflect on the different types of interactions that we have with others. What is this marrying back for me, what I want to see about myself, right? And this mirroring of what they were saying they wanted, you are discovering what resonates within you, like, well, I also want family. Or I don't, you know, and you're realizing a lot about what you want, right? Five of Cups, you have transformation of emotion from lower vibration to higher vibration. Again, this is a lot of what this purpose of them coming across your path was. And the Sun card, bring in new brightness into your life. But also, this is inner child Leo energy. And I like this, that you felt seen, you feel understood and you, you understand the type of relationship that you want is someone that does connect at that spiritual level, that resonates with that, that connects with that. Like, that's one of the things that, things that we're missing in my relationships. Especially since, well, the first one, I hadn't really come to this place. I hadn't started to get outside the box, right? It was more towards the end of the, my first relationship. But the ones after it, they were new that I was like connected and I was expanding. I did Tarot and different things. I wasn't like hugely like, I was doing it for me and a couple of friends here and there. And they look at it as like a party trick and they're like, thought it was cool. It wasn't their spirituality. And that's something I realized, if I ever have a relationship in the future, in this lifetime, for the remaining time I have left here, it's gonna have to be someone who's also connected to Spirit, not, you know, not. That's funny. All right, so I feel like that's a, a big awareness that you have, like, okay, thank you. This is such a huge stepping stone for you and I like that, for that. The other one here, the 52 year old, you got the Eight of Swords here. Which, so this energy with them is, there is this of looking at thoughts and belief and mindsets that don't serve you anymore, that releasing energy. So again, this one kind of feels like a stepping stone more so. I don't feel like they're like this, they might adore you. And it's like, it's nice to be adored and that, and there hasn't been romantic connection. But you're also like, are they, where are they at with that spiritualness? Let's see what we have here. Yeah, they do have the Ten of Pentacles. There is this fullness of life that can be there, you know. So they're definitely, if it's in something that you're like, can give it a try, you know, but I know that doesn't sound very, doesn't sound very up, excuse me, appetizing, right? You can try it, here, taste this. But you got the King of Cups that's coming in here. So they can be someone that's compatible. I feel like they would feel like you could be this fullness of life and that you could be compatible with them. You know, there's joy and celebration here with them. Got the Two of Swords, there would be a battle between head and heart here. Would make sense in your head, but your heart would be wanting more, I feel. Queen of Swords, what you got? These counterparts here, the King of Cups. Oh, that's where the, the, the battling comes in here. Between the head and heart is what really means a good fit for you. Like you would be a good fit for them, I mean, you know, realistically, besides the little wanting babies, outside of that, right? It's like, who, who wouldn't? I mean, hello. But would they be a good match for you? And that's where that comes in with that spiritual connection. The spirit world is going to be such an important thing for you that you would end up, Eight of Cups would be walking away from emotions that don't serve. It would end up not really progressing because there would be that empty spot. And this is becoming such a huge part for you, right? So I don't, I see why the other one came in to do the spark. The other one feels like you'd be settling because I don't feel like they are at that level of spirituality that you're needing, that spiritual connection. Because you want to be able to expand it and do things and they'd be like, they wouldn't get it. I don't feel like they wouldn't, it wouldn't really resonate with them. So who is this other? Yeah, Queen of Wands, you need someone who celebrates you. This Queen of Wands is someone who is spiritually connected, right? Spiritual energy, but also empathic, you know, so someone who can really understand and, and that is it, practicing it, not just that someone that can understand it. Well, I get it, I can support you in that. It's like, this isn't like a hobby that you can support or something. This is like my essence, right? There's a difference in that. So they would, it would be someone with this. Yeah, and also someone from past life connections here. So you will also feel that, you know, you've had plenty of past lives with a lot of different people. But this, the death and rebirth is kind of a reincarnation card. So of course you have had past lives with whoever this person is, the strong, long, you know, past life history. You have the Two of Wands. Two of Wands energy, that is about, whatever you focus on grows and expands. Let me see, you want to get clarification on that? Because I feel like there's more, yeah, Judgment card. So this is your higher self calling you to a different place here and, and that's that energy, right? The Two of Wands is that, that supporter, but it's the, it's not just that they are supporting you in your adventure that you support them and their energetic higher calling adventure. So you both have this calling of sharing these gifts and expanding these gifts. And that's an important part of your adventure. It's, it's not something that's, it's, it's not just a hobby. Like I said, it's a calling that you have. And you have the World card, yeah. Ending of an old cycle, beginning of new adventure. I like that you got the Judgment 20, 21. So there is this, it's a whole different type of relationship. You're letting go of all these expectations and there's these openness, this world of possibilities that's coming in here. And I do feel here with that, that, you know, I don't necessarily feel like you have another like faded relationship that's the absolute, right? You know, Benjamin, you were gonna meet, that was a faded relationship. Where regardless of what path you took, you were gonna experience Benjamin. You guys had agreed it, you knew exactly what's gonna happen before you came down here. You knew he wasn't gonna be there for the entire remainder of your life. And it was like, okay, it was gonna be this. But beyond that, there's, if you go this route, you'll meet this person. You go this route, you meet this person. You go this route, you meet this person. So there's not a, another faded one, but there's a possibilities here. And that's great because you're like, I don't need to, you know, I get, I get to go with the flow. The Nine of Wands here, with your final card here on the Tarot is the, you know, this perseverance, but it's you stepping into your power that allows you to go through with this. And the Nine of Wands is that, that energy of, like with the Ace of Wands, that you get to choose. And again, that comes back to that Emperor too, which makes total sense, that you get to move forward in how you want to progress. You get to choose the path, you get to decide where you want to go. So I like that energy for you. I know, well, what's next, right? Well, let's take a look here, your fortune cookie, yep, authenticity. Again, being true to the authentic you and he had all these twos that were throughout your cards here. It says, hold your head up high, walk tall and be your authentic self. This card asks you to shed the masks that you believed you were required to wear. Walk to the beat of your own drum and do not be afraid to shine. In doing so, you give others permission to do the same. So I love that for you, you know, follow your dreams, follow your passions. It's in doing that and living your life is what, you know, how things unfold and how you bump into whoever will come in. And then you get to decide if what I want with this person or not. Because there's not any have to's for the remainder, you get to choose. You're the Emperor, so hopefully that helps, my dear. That is what they have for you. So many blessings to you. Thank you again for your donation. All right. Then we have Nelia Mederos. Nelia, thank you. You have two donations, so thank you for those. We'll do those. You also had your free reading, which I'll plop on to the end of your donation. So it's all in one, you just have one, one timestamp, you don't have to worry about it. All right, so Nelia, let us bring up the first one here. So thank you for that, the cha-ching in the eyeballs there. See, like any messages regarding your current workplace and your future workplace? When will you retire before age 65? And any other messages from Spirit? All right, let's take a look here. So any messages regarding your current workplace? Okay, I do have this one and this one. And then your future workplace. And I feel like these two down here and that one underneath, oh, okay. Scorch those. Will you retire before the age 65? I'm sorry. And then anything else that Spirit wants you to know? I don't know what the card is, but I feel like, well, we're gonna define that what retire means, right? So we do have on the bottom of the deck, of course, we've got the King of Wands, which is a lot like the Emperor energy, which is you get to choose. You know, you get to clear away all those expectations, all those opinions. And I get to decide what I want to do. There's no, with that card in there, there's not like a faded job that you have to be in. You'll get your experiences, whatever way you do it. And there's no supposed to or have to or whatever. You get to choose that, you get to decide what you want. You put the energy behind it, Creator and your spiritual support team will support it, right? So I like that. And because there's that freedom of that possibilities there. Energy for your current workplace, you have the Page of Swords. It feels like there's some new communication coming down here, Queen of Pentacles. Yeah, this is, Queen of Pentacles is Mother Nature, Mother Nurtur, choosing your heart, following your heart, new birth. New things coming in, and the Three of Cups too. It's following your joy. The Queen of Pentacles is that too, about following your heart, following your joy. There's new clarity that comes in here in your current job. And I do feel like you're very stagnant, very, I'm done here. It, I don't feel joy, I don't feel like I wanna, you know, continue to be in this, this place, right? So let's take a look here at your future workplace here. Yeah, so this is this energy of, you got the King of Pentacles. It feels more full of life and Two of Wands. I feel like the Two of Wands, the energy that comes in with this is that you have more options for growth and more opportunities for choosing what path you want to go. I feel like in your current job, there's only so much and like everyone else is so there for such a long time. Or to get, to go higher, you have to like, it, it's gonna take someone retiring for things to move. And it's like, you've reached the point of, I can't go anywhere, we're stuck in traffic, right? This one is there's more roads you can travel down in this other job that, or, you know, that you would head into. Yeah, you got the Eight of Cups and the Nine of Swords, yeah. So underlying energy is like letting go of emotions and relationships that don't serve you anymore and fears that don't serve you anymore. And I like this, I feel like you grow a lot at this other company that you go to, this new job that you go to. Because you have some old beliefs that used to keep you restricted and trapped. And I can't do that and emotions attached to that. But these go back a long time ago where it'd be like, if you have a belief, I don't do good in math. Why do you believe that? Well, my, my dad told me that because I was failing at math. And well, did he help you study? No, because he didn't understand the math either. And you're like, well, wait a minute. Maybe if I had a teacher, maybe if I had someone that believed in me, I would have been able to connect with my math. And so that's a lie. I can do anything, you know, so it's like overcoming those beliefs. Like I can't go into, there's a lot of math or there's a lot of that, I can't do that. Who says you can't do that? Why do you believe that? Questioning that, because I feel like this job, there's so many opportunities that you realize, what is keeping me from doing this? And I like, I read, I saw something on Instagram today. Yeah, I read Instagram. While I'm eating, I scroll, I'm like, oh, this is really cool. Because I follow a lot of inspirational people and they said, it was like, instead of going, what am I afraid of? It's like, what, how, how can I have the courage to do this? Where's my courage to do this? How can I ignite my courage to do this? So instead of focusing on the fear, what am I fearing? Which being, coming aware of our fears is important too, but you can also look at, where's the courage to move forward, right? Yeah, I like this too. So you have this Victory card, the World card, and this Ending of an Old Cycle, the Beginning of a New Adventure. So it does feel like that, it just feels like so many opportunities. Because you leave the World card, the last card of the Major Arcana and go to the Full card, the Zero, which is, anything is possible. And I like that. This new job just offers so many different pathways that it's exciting. So I like that. Will you retire before the age of 65? You know, shoot for the stars and hit the moon. I'm just kidding. You got the Moon card. And you have the Knight of Pentacles, slow moving Pentacles here. So what I really feel with all this here is, you know, I, I feel like you are able to financially retire if you wanted to. I feel like you get out of the busy, 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 big company, corporate life kind of stuff. And I feel like you get into something where you're still working, you're still doing something. It's like part time, but I, I feel like you, like if I didn't work, I'd be bored. It's like if I didn't do this, and I'm not 65 yet, I'm 58. But if I, you know, once I reach retirement age and I start taking my social security, if it's still around, it's like, would I just stop and do nothing? No, I, I can't not do something to help the world. And I feel like you would get into something where you would help the world and you'd help. You know, it would be some sort of organization that helps, that you would work part time or something where you're doing that, maybe even volunteering and some other things. But financially, I feel like you're building slowly where you could. But I feel like you wouldn't want to, when you, once you get to that point because you're wanting to do something more. What else does Spirit want you to know around career? You got the Seven of Swords? Yeah, that's the thievery. And that goes back to those other swords. What are the things that steal opportunities from me? I couldn't do that. No, I couldn't do that. It's like believing in yourself, right? Yeah, Nine of Cups. Also, what does a dream come true look like? What does success look like? Well, getting to retirement, what are we waiting for? You know, waiting until retirement to live, right? Get the Page of Wands too. It's like we, if it's, it's like the same thing as working for the weekend, right? It's like, I can't wait for my two days off. But we always rush to get to the weekend and then what happens with the weekend? It flies by and here we are at work again. And then let's rush to try to get to the next weekend and then that flies by. Before we knew it, a year has gone by and five years have gone by, 10 years have gone by. And we're like, I'm not enjoying life because I'm working for the weekends that always fly by so fast. I don't feel like I'm living, I feel like I'm existing. So it's about finding this position, finding something to follow your heart where you feel like you're living today. And, and basically you retire from this belief about what life success means. And you're able to change things to where you feel like you're living instead of existing, right? So your fortune cookie for this is nurture. Here's that nurturing energy. Nurture your wonderful self. Whenever we sow seeds, you know, whenever we sow seeds, however much we yearn to see them grow, we cannot force them to develop any quicker than nature will allow. That's that Knight of Pentacles too, right? Last thing that grows on the fruit tree is the fruit, but it's the slowest night watching the grass grow. But we can provide them these seeds with the best possible conditions to grow. Whatever you have initiated in your life, this card is here to encourage you. Be patient and nurture your relationship, your idea, your project with love. I love that, all right. So that's that one for you now, yeah? So thank you for that donation. And then for your second donation. Let's go over here, bring your free reading over. Any messages regarding you and Helton, your relationship where it's heading? How long and how it ends or anything Spirit wants you to know here? Did we ask about Helton the other night? Right, I hope. Maybe I dreamt about this. All right, so any messages, current energy regarding you and Helton, your relationship? All right, I got that. Where it's heading based on current energies? Got those, okay. And then, how long? Based on current energies, do we have anything about timing? And anything else that Spirit wants you to say? Oh, how it ends, okay. And then whatever, anything else Spirit has to say? All right. Alright. Alright, so bottom of the deck, we do have the Six of Wands energy. It is an energy of mutual attraction, energetic attraction or physical attraction, three ones on either side, you know. It's balanced energy. So there is this energetic attraction between the two, right? Um, so what they want, what does Spirit want to give you about the relationship itself? Got the Ace of Pentacles. This new opportunity in the outside world, what's this about? Okay. So we got the world card, this ending of an old cycle, beginning new adventure. That's like your relate uh, career reading, right? And the Six of Pentacles. Now, the Six of Pentacles is that energy of code, it's my code, one of, one of the messages of that is codependency awareness. That's the energy that comes in here. I mean, just right off the bat. You know, there's equal physical attraction, energetic attraction. You might have other attraction, but I feel like theirs is mainly that physical and energetic. Because with the Six of Pentacles, it's like codependency awareness where they don't have a whole lot to give, right? Um, and that tendency for you to be an over giver. You know, sometimes some of the most attractive people to us are the most who, who are most in need. I think I told you that before where, you know, whenever I met someone, I'm like, you must have been really through hell, like I, yeah, how did you kind of tell? Cause I'm really attracted to you and I like the fixer-uppers. I didn't sell them that. That's what I said in here. I'm like, oh no, that's what I used to be drawn to, right? So I feel like, you know, there is this ending and beginning energy that comes in. And we'll find out about the ending and how, how it ends and stuff, but I already feel like there's this, it's ending before it's beginning kind of energy. Before it really gets going, I feel like you really realize how much you are giving, 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 giving and the return isn't coming and you have like this. Well, I can see they have the capacity to do this. Yeah, but it doesn't mean they're gonna do it, right? And, and that's the thing. It's like as a manager and jobs are bringing this to me, uh, we used to realize when someone was struggling um, in performance in a job, we had to determine, is it capacity? Or is it um, will? Cause there's some people where they're like, they just don't have the ability to do a certain job. They don't have the, especially when it was in IT. It's like they don't have the background, they're, they don't get how the computer systems and everything work. So they just don't have the ability, they don't have the training or the mental capacity to, to grasp this stuff. They're like, I, they don't, or the, the interest, right? The other is they can do it, but they just don't want to. So there, there's a difference between the two and this is more, yeah, they, the capacity, but do they have the will? And sometimes do they have the ability? Because if I don't have a whole lot of self-love for myself, I can't give something I don't have for myself. So even though you see the possibility of, I could see how eventually they could give this to me. Doesn't mean that that's where they're capable of doing it now. And if they're gonna put the energy behind it to get there, to raise their self-love where their love opens up, where they can give more love. Could they do it? Yeah, they totally could, but will they? That's the whole thing. That's why I feel like you're gonna realize that you're giving, giving, giving so much and not getting a whole lot back from this one. Um, where's it heading? The Knight of Cups is a movement of emotion. But the Knight of Cups is a quest for self-love and I feel like where it's heading is this reflection to show it that, you know, all of us are searching for our self-love. But if we're looking for it out here, we're never gonna find it. It's inward and upward. Uh, where this comes here, yeah. Temperance with the Four of Cups, emotional stagnancy, takes a long time. And that's where I'm feeling here is like you're wanting this movement of emotion. You're raising your self-love, you wanna be able to give and receive love at this, but if, if your ability to give and receive love expands as you're opening up your self-love in big ways, that just makes the little drip that they're able to be, to give feel even smaller. Then when, like if our self-love is like this and all we can give is flood out and drip and all that, people flood in is drip. Um, if all that, you know, we realize, oh, that's all I'm giving, that's all I'm getting back. Okay, that seems fair. But if you're like, your self-love is like this and you're giving whoosh and they're giving drip, you're like, uh, that's it, you know? So I kind of feel like this is what is, where this is heading. Um, and yeah. So we do have the Power of Choice card, the Two of Cups, the Power of Emotional Choice. And all this about relationship here. It just feels like you're, you're really seeing this and there's this movement. You know, Cancer energy with the chariot and the, which is, you know, big, big, big emotion. Flow, but um, I just feel like there's this huge mirror that you're seeing with this and um, and you're realizing again, that you're, you're giving so much and getting so little. Um, how long does this go on? You have the Sun card here, Leo energy. Leo season. I know, right? Here it comes. Let's see. Leo comes after uh, so we got Taurus, Gemini. Uh, yeah, we've got Taurus season, Gemini season, Cancer season, Leo season. So what is that? I think Leo comes before Virgo, Virgo's eight twenty, so it'd be like July twentieth to August twentieth, right? That's Leo season with the Sun card. That's kind of where it's headed with the ending. Um, how does it end? Yep, King of Cups and Nine of Cups. Definitely is this, your balance between your, your head and your heart and the Nine of Cups going, this is my emotional wish come true. And, and that is all this cups energy, this love energy and you're like, this is what I want. You know, I want someone that can be able to give what I give, right? Equal giving and receiving. That's the other Six of Pentacles meaning. So the codependency where it's someone over giving and getting a little back. The, it's like this wonderful equal giving and receiving, which is what you deserve to have, right? And what else Spirit has for you here? Yep, Knight of Wands, Knight of Swords, yeah. So you've got this fast-moving energy, this, this quest. I mean, you have the, the Knight of Cups, you got all these three knights that came out in your reading. You're wanting someone who is wanting to expand, wanting to grow. Someone who's not stagnant, like with the Four of Cups with that stagnant love energy that you're feeling, they're not um, expanding into that. They're all this questing, it's exciting when you can grow together with someone. And this is what you're looking for and it doesn't feel like that's what you would get with, with this one. You know, I just feel like it's, they don't have that desire right now in their life for growth and change, so it would just be that, you know? So I'm sorry, I know, Nellie, I know. Let's take a look here. What's your fortune cookie say here? Yeah, ground yourself. You're grounded. I'm just kidding. Number twenty-one. So this card is a request for you to literally ground yourself. Go outdoors, take off your shoes, find somewhere where it's safe to stand barefoot. Imagine roots growing out of your feet, traveling down into the soil beneath you, anchoring you with nurturing energy of the earth. So getting out into nature, connecting with nature will help you kind of be able to step back and kind of see things um, more clearly here too. Alright, so that's what they have for you, my dear. Alrighty, and then your free reading, anything you need to know from your guardian angels. Alright, I, I've been drawn to these angels and aura oracles. So if you know it's your free reading, it's your bonus, you get a oracle. Alright. Let's see what we get here. So focus on your health, wellness, active radiance and nourishment. So card number four, no, twenty-four. So let's see what we have here. So focusing on your health is an important thing, but getting out into Mother Nature was important. The angels are congratulating you on your awareness of health and wellness. It is also a reassurance that if you're currently struggling with a physical challenge, it will get better. Your body is acclimating to a higher vibration. Your aura is glowing with the energy of health and healing. The shadow message uh, tells you that this card can suggest that it's important to consider changes that would lead to a healthier experience. You might need to make adjustments to your diet, find ways to get more exercise or release yourself from addictions. It's important to have a more mindful approach to your physical wellbeing. That's just the shadow energy. So if any of that resonates, I like to read them just in case they do. But the color activation for this is red and green. Oh, Christmas colors. The color red highlights our energy exchange with those around us. It is a gentle reminder that you cannot pour from an empty cup. Green energy connects us to our life force and helps to recharge our energy battery. I like that. It's time for you to focus on you and making sure you're nurturing your, your physical body. Even your mental body, your emotional body, your energetic and spiritual body too, right? So it's a good reminder to rest and recharge. Give yourself that. It's a gift. Alright, so that's what they have for you now. Yet so many blessings to you. Thank you again for all your donations. Greatly appreciate that. Alright, then Aries rising, you are up. Let me grab your time stamp. I don't know, I accidentally went southern. There you go. Oh. I was gonna post it into a chat, which doesn't exist, so I put it down here for later. Alright, so Aries rising, thank you so much for your donation. Anyone to know here, did CR and BD communicate recently? Also, will they be meeting up anytime this month or next? You're the man to see about this, so spill the tea. Alright, let me take a drink to my coffee here. It's a close thing I have to tea, so let's see here. So did CR and BD communicate recently? Right. Got the deets underneath, alright. And then will they be meeting up anytime this month? Or next? Okay, and what do we uh, find out about below here? Oh, 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 alright. Alright, well, the bottom energy we do have the full card, that is an energy of new beginnings. Like it's an ending of an old cycle, the beginning of new adventures. So we'll see what that means here. So there's something restarted uh, here. But we'll see. Um, so did they communicate recently? Got the death card. Here's that death and rebirth. And the Eight of Swords, woo, throwing things around. Eight of Swords is about leaving behind old ways of thinking and uh, restrictions and, and that freedom. So this could be a, an actual release. Well, we'll see here. What's underneath that? What's this energy underneath this communication? Queen of Cups. Queen of Cups, she reminds me of the High Priestess. There's a lot of emotion. She's the master of emotion. There's a lot of motion rolling underneath the surface here. I feel like I'm gonna need a clarifier here to find out what is this communication about? Is this an ending or is this a reboot? So can you tell me more about this, please? The High Priestess, the Hidden coming to it and Seven of Swords, ooh. Seven of Swords is lying deception and there's a lot of deception that's involved here. So I feel like there has been communication here. And, but there's a lot of hidden and unseen and un, it's like there's a lot of hiding, a lot of trickery and, and lying and deceit that's involved in this communication. So, um, I, I do believe that there is this here, this rebooting of a connection between them here. Hmm, let's take a look here. Are they gonna meet up anytime this month? Queen of Pentacles, um, there is this new birth. So I do feel like there is uh, some this month. What about next month? You got the Eight of Cups and the Four of Wands. So there is this, leaving behind relationships and other emotions that don't serve them and Four of Wands is joy and celebration and gathering. So I do feel like there, there is so much of this energy underneath here too. Knight of Swords and Page of Pentacles, yeah. So this does tell me a lot of clarity. Knight of Swords is a movement of communication. Page of Pentacles is new opportunities in the physical world. So I feel like that kind of just brings it all and confirms any kind of, I'm like, is this what this means? It feels like this is the energy, but that definitely nailed it here for me because that is. Are they communicating? Knight of Swords, yes. There's new communication. Page of Pentacles, are they getting together? Yes, Page of Pentacles. So I feel like yes, next month, I mean, this month and next month. And all this energy that's in here. Ugh, so I don't know if that's good, bad or ugly. But it's good that at least that it's being brought out, at least into your awareness. Um, if this impacts you directly or if we were just being nosy about someone else's relationships or what's going on with someone, but I definitely feel like there, there has been this rebirth after the death and the rebirth. Let's see what your fortune cookie says here. Yep, expectation, card fifteen. It says, expectation is a form of memory. Our past experiences color our expectations of fu- future circumstances and outcomes. You're asked to release any form of negative expectations based on past experiences and center yourself in the infinite possibility of now. So however that resonates here for you, but it's about releasing the old is gonna repeat itself. Um, and it's about coming back into the moment. So if this energy relates to you, I feel like you know how to apply that. But if this relates to them and, and their energy, it does feel like they're like, well, maybe this time it won't, things won't be repeated and let's live in the moment. That full card is about releasing expectations and having possibilities. But if one of them has these expectations of, well, we're not gonna repeat those things. Well, did you guys change? Cause if not, how is it gonna be any different, right? If you haven't changed, if they haven't changed, then how is that gonna end up any different than it was before, right? So it's gonna take them letting all the expectations go for anything to work with them, if that's what we're wondering about. So hopefully that helps Aries rising. So thank you again for your donation. Hang in there. And many blessings to you. Alright, so Tanya Hay, hikes, sorry, not Hayes. You're up next here. Old man eyes, I'm like, wait, that's not Hayes, that's hikes. Alright, let's bring that over here. Alright, so we'll, we're moving on to free readings now. So I got my two YouTube channel members will be up next. And then I'll move into the other free readings. These will go faster um, than the others, because these are just one to two card readings. Um, so there you go. Alright, and you, uh, Tanya, you wanted any messages from your dad, Bill? You know, I've been going to these angels and aura oracles and a bunch of readings. Um, when it's hearing from the other side and I am being drawn to that, so let's grab that here for you. Some messages from your dad, Bill. Alright, there we go. And you got spiritual adventure, travel, education, experience and inspiration. It's like they're along with you on your adventures. I like that. And that's card number thirty-nine. So let's take a look here. So they want you to know that you're in the flow of a joyful life adventure. You're considering making a choice that would expand your horizon and bring new wonderful experiences. And um, your dad may even be extending an invitation for you to grow and evolve in ways that may feel just a bit outside of in ways that may feel just a bit outside of your comfort zone. Oh, dad, why are you pushing me? That's okay. Keep in mind that, uh, they are, um, um, I'm sorry, that your father has their metaphorical bags packed and ready to go with you on this journey. It's going to be a wonderful experience. So whatever this decision that you are making or have made or will be making, that's like, they're like, they're pushing you to grow, um, and choose something that's more in alignment with your heart and expanding, so it feels like a big change is coming your way and they're telling you, don't worry, I'm with you on this adventure. You know, um, anytime you close your eyes and open your heart, you'll feel me there. It comes with a shadow message. We'll see if that resonates for you as well. So it'd be your father trying to tell you that you're surrounded by opportunities that could enrich every part of your life, such a dad thing. It's time to shake things up, baby. Life has become repetitive and even boring. Even the simplest of changes in your average day can bring a bit of happiness into an otherwise unfulfilling existence. You're not born to live a life without adventure and excitement. So tell your dad what your, what your dream experience for yourself would be right now and get moving. So, uh, there we go. And the color activation is gold and green. The color gold is helping you to say yes to new experiences and opportunities. The energy of green often associated with spontaneity is birthing a sense of excitement and adventure. So they're definitely, um, have this energy of nudging you to move forward and try this new. It's time for an adventure. It's not time to stay stagnant and still they wanna nudge you to move forward. And so I like that for you, Tanya. That's what they have for you, my dear. So many blessings to you. Such a dad energy, right? Alright, and then divine empathic tarot, you are up next. Let me jot your timestamp down. Alright, so divine empathic tarot, good evening. Anyone to know what do you need to know today, my fiend? Alright, so got the four of wands and the page of swords, alright. So the four of wands is about joy and celebration and gatherings. And the page of swords is about a new communication that's coming in here, right? I do like this for you. Because whatever this is, whatever this decision that's coming up, I do, it feels like an invitation to a gathering of some sort. Uh, this page of swords, I just feel like an invitation. It's like a written invitation, uh, and the four of wands is to like a wedding, a gathering, a joyous celebration. And I feel like what spirit is saying here is, uh, go, do this. So if it's a wedding and you're like, oh, God, I wanna go to this thing, blah, blah, blah. You know, it's like rally, rally yourself to go. It's gonna be so joyful and it's gonna be, I feel like you, there's a significant connection that you make at this, whatever is coming up. And it can be that, you know, like you're not gonna meet, oh, am I gonna meet the love of my life there? No, but you're gonna meet someone who will eventually connect you to them some way, somehow. And so it's important for you to go and, and make this connection and, and, um, and it's so important. So I feel like that's what they want you to know here. Yeah, you even have the two of swords, get out of your head and into your heart, close your eyes, open your heart, go, okay. I do wanna go to that. And so you're being nudged to whatever this invitation of this gathering is, go, it's important for you. Alright, so that's what they have for you, divine empathic tarot. So many blessings to you. Alright, and then we have Teresa Horton, you are up next. So Teresa, Teresa, you, you in your hello sexy voice? Alright. So Teresa, you said your daughter, thirty-five years old, her man is thirty-four. They stay together, they live together, and she said, why won't he sleep in the bed with her? Well, she snores. Didn't he tell her, just hasn't anyone told her that she snores? I'm just kidding. Uh, what's wrong? She said, um, she, she doesn't believe that he's cheating, right? Alright, let's take a look here. Alright, I got that one and this one here. So what's going on here? What's the deets? What is happening? King of pentacles, king of swords. Right, yeah, I don't feel like they're, it's not cheating. This is like power in, power energy. King of pentacles is this, um, you know, very, uh, earthy, grounding, abundant energy. And behind the scenes, they have swords. The king of swords rules over swords, plus has swords. So it's three parts in their head, overthinking, thinking, thinking, one part earth and groundedness, so. I, I feel, I don't feel like there's anything, you know, like I don't sense cheating or, you know, deception and stuff. I feel like they have so much on their head and there's so much overthinking things that I feel like there's some insomnia here. Um, but maybe there is some snoring, cause there's a bull here. But either, uh, it's funny, cause snoring was coming up in there and, and I don't know if that's, if he snores or she snores or you both snore and he needs his rest. But I feel like he would say it, but I feel like there's a lot on his mind and a lot of thinking that's going on. So I don't feel like it's cheating, but I do feel like they're really caught up in their head. They're having trouble sleeping. There's fears that are coming up, um, and yeah, just feels like there's a lot of miscommunication, a lot of lack of communication. I just feel like they get so caught up in here that they have this, um, it's a, it would be almost encouraging and to, you know, talk to someone, like he needs, he needs to talk to someone to get it out of his head. Cause when it's all up in here, it's dark and, uh, not dark, like danger dark, but like these beliefs are easier to believe when they're kept in the darkness. And, and I just feel like they've been taught to keep the, everything to themselves. And so I feel like counsel, you know, couple counseling would be good if they could go talk to someone to learn to communicate. And I feel like it would be good for him to get it out of there, but I just feel like he's got all this stuff really stuck in his head and, and it's this energy of pulling away. And so it's, I don't feel like it's to do with your, your daughter specifically. I just feel like, it feels like their life is out of control and they just don't know. It's like there's this, desperation sounds so extreme, but it just feels like they're not at their wit's end or desperate or dangerous and that. I just feel like they're so in their head. I can't, I can't, um, put words around this energy, cause it just feels like I'm so confused. And that's why I'm having trouble communicating. This is exactly what they're going through is, I don't know what I'm feeling, I can't put it into words. All I know is I need to be away and I need to be this, be here, you know? And I can't communicate it. So I feel like, you know, something going on up, up in the, up in the noggin. Hopefully that helps. Sorry there, Teresa, but that's what's coming through. I just, I don't have any more than that. But if they could get, if he's willing to go talk to someone, I really feel like that would be an important thing for them to do, right? You did have a question about why you're seeing a turquoise peacock on your wall with wings and seen on the wall and colors and all that. Um, if you return tomorrow, um, we can look into that question. For free readings, I just have one, one free reading per customer. It's like everyone gets to go through the, um, you know, the potluck line before you get to go back for seconds. So if you want more, we can follow up on another one on that. And that's interesting, I'd like to dive into that. But I figured you'd wanna know about your daughter more than, than the peacock right now. Alright, so yeah, definitely follow up on that. I'd love to dive into that for you. Alright, and then Atashi Singh, you are up next for your free reading. And Atashi said, based on current energies, as you always say, I love it. I'm brainwashing you. So is SSP your future spouse or partner? You keep getting signs and a shift in energy. Alright, well, we'll double check, yeah. Can always, um, you know, verify that. So based on current energies, are they your future spouse partner? Are things a-changing? Alright, well, I can see why you're seeing that, cause you have the six of swords, which is letting go of some old ways of thinking, movement forward here, balancing of the head and heart. So there have been some changes of thoughts and beliefs and perspectives. So something has clicked in this energy, cause again, moving from choppy waters to calmer waters. Um, it is movement and change, cause when this changes, it's moving out here. And the queen of swords is one of my, um, compatibility, um, cards for partnerships. So I feel like something has switched, so something clicked where they're seeing here now and seeing you more as someone that, wow, maybe, you know, this is someone that really meshes and really fits like a glove and we have more in common and stuff. And it can be here too, that as they, you know, this is what happens, right? Is when you're, you're with someone and you're, it's like a, they're giving me the example of like at a job and you think, well, this job, I don't know if this is really what it is for me. I don't know if it, you know, is the best thing. And then you start looking in the outside world at other jobs that are available and you realize, I have it good here, you know? And I feel like there's that kind of change of energy here, um, coming in at Atashi. So based on current energies, I do feel like there's this partnership. I don't necessarily get marriage energy yet, cause I feel like that it's the changing of mindset that they're seeing, like you could be a good partner. You could really be this, um, you could be this, um, you know, match, this very compatible person with me. That doesn't mean that they're a compatible person for you, but I do feel like the energy is switching where it feels more, um, movement in that area. So there we go, Atashi. See, now we'll check tomorrow and go, okay, don't move suddenly. Alright, so that is what they have for you. So many blessings to you, right? And then Yessenya Marquez, you are up. So let me grab your timestamp here. So Yessenya, um, I see that you put two questions. But I think the first question is what you asked at the end of the last session. So if you go to the stream, um, not this, was it, uh, not, um, this evening session, but the long five, almost six hour one? You came in at the end of that and I did get that completed for you there. And there's a timestamp in the, the thing, and I believe that's the question you asked. If I'm wrong, please come back tomorrow, cause I do, uh, one free question per session. So, uh, we'll do the, does Carlos want to reconcile your relationship? Is it even worth fixing or should you move on, right? So, um, when will you meet your future person? I, I believe was the question you asked earlier. So be sure to check that out. If you have trouble finding it, let me know and I'll, I'll give you the link to it. Alright, so does Carlos want to reconcile your relationship? Okay, and then is it worth it or move on, right? So did they wanna reconcile? Two of wands, they haven't decided yet. Two of wands is like, well, kind of, duh, you know, it's, which decision do I wanna make? I'm not sure yet, cause they're standing at the fork in the road. Um, but is it even worth it or is it best to move on? You have the four of swords. Four of swords is this peace of mind. I kinda feel like with that, that's like letting the expectations go. The ace of swords is gaining clarity and, and it is a, a movement of mind. I just feel like here that this indecision is like the answer, right? It's like, do you wanna reconcile with our relationship? Well, I don't know. Well, then you're stupid. If you don't know, you're stupid, you know? That's what I feel. And for your peace of mind, I feel like moving on is best, because it's like, yeah, we have feelings, our heart will always have feelings. There always be, I look at our heart as like this, um, giant hotel with this, you know, huge little, in the middle, it's, it's hollow. And they're in the middle, down at the very bottom, there's this beautiful romantic table set for two. And whoever we are in having love with in the moment is there. And, but everyone that we've loved in our past has a hotel room that they're locked in. And there's always a space for those, that there's always a space in our heart for everyone that we've loved. But it doesn't mean we have to reserve the table and where no one else can sit down. It's like, you know what? Yep, your room, you know, six hundred, we're putting you way up there. But I feel like there, it's for your peace of mind, it's best to move on, because I don't feel like you will always be wondering and always be wondering, when are you gonna leave next? When are you gonna leave next? Because, um, if they don't know, then they'll never know, you know? And they will, if someone leaves once, then they will give up again, easy again. And I feel like it's best for you to move forward, um, yeah, forward, is this energy, right? So that's what they have for you, Yessenya. So many blessings to you. Alright. And then we have Gazanfar Hassan. Hopefully I didn't murder that too badly. Uh, you are up next here. And you wanna know, will Myra and Hamad reconcile in the future? So based on current energies. Will they reconcile in the future? Alrighty, ready, ready. You know, don't, based on current energies, it doesn't feel like this here. Four of cups is like a stagnant energy. And the six of swords, it would require leaving behind some old ways of thinking um, and looking at things from a higher place and, um, but I, I don't feel like both parties would be willing to let these expectations and the old ways go. And so it's like, if I'm not gonna change things, then I'll just end up repeating the same patterns over and over and over again. And I feel like there, one person in here feels like the other person would never change. And so I don't feel like there's reconciliation impossible with that. I just feel like they're seeing that, no, um, we're gonna keep doing what we've always did and getting what we've always gotten. And so I don't feel like this energy, it feels like a flow away, not, you know, a coming together energy that I'm feeling there. So that's what's coming in based on current energies there, alright? So many blessings, hang in there. And then Libby Bagada, you are up next. Libby, hello, hello. Alright, let's bring over your reading here. So Libby, you wanna ask for a general reading from your spirit guides? Alright, let's see, what do they want you to know right now? Right now, right now, right now. So you've got the four of pentacles and the hermit card. Wow, stay at home. So you do have the four pentacles is my home card, the four walls of the outside world. And the hermit card, which is all about kind of staying back, staying in your little nest. And I feel like the energy right now is, you know, the, the hermit card is like this invitation to connect with your spiritual posse. They have some things they wanna show you and guide you and help you step into your power. And so they're like, you know, journal, stay at home, connect with us. However you have been connecting with spirit, it's, uh, I feel like it's an invitation. You know, come, come in, rest and connect with us, cause we wanna, we wanna shower you with this love energy. We wanna bring you downloads and upgrades and show you some things about your life. But I feel like they're saying, yeah, come to us. We, this is an invitation to spend some time with us, because they do, do wanna definitely shower you with that, you know, beautiful eternal unconditional love energy. But they also wanna bring you some messages and some, whether it's mental messages, emotional messages, energetic messages, even physical signs and synchronicities. They wanna, um, show you the reality of who you really are and to flood you with a lot of love. So that's what their messages for you, Libby. I like it. So that's what their messages for you, Libia. I like it. Invitation. All right. So that is what they have. So many blessings to you. And then Alphonse Fussier, hello, hello. You are up next. Bring this over here. Hello from the desert. All right, cactus. Your question is, does spirit see Lisa coming back to you and to be your long term romantic partner? All right, we'll take a look here and see based on current energy, what we're looking at here. No, during the Venus retrograde would have been when they would have really come back, right? Because that is the the timing of that or even the mercury retrograde. But we're beyond that now. So if they didn't come back um between when you posted that and now, we'll we'll take a look here and see what we have here. So I'm coming back to you and bringing it a long term partner. All right. You know, I don't, yeah, even on the bottom of the deck, we've got all these twos swords. This is like a lot of indecision energy. It's like being in the fork in the road. The decision hasn't been made. I feel like when we pulled these before that um it was a no, right? I don't, I think of the ones that we've pulled before, it just feels like the energy we had was no, no, no. But now it's like, I don't, I don't know, what? You know, it's went from an N O to a I don't K N O W. So there is this indecision, there is some thinking going on here regarding that. Now you've got the four of wands too, which the four of wands is a celebration and a gathering energy. I don't know if you guys have common friends or things, but I feel like you're gonna you're gonna bump into them at some sort of celebration or some sort of gathering. Um, and I feel like when you do that, you know, I don't know, that it that it'll help them decide. And so based on, and I think we talked about, you know, how if we allow them the space to be themselves and not have expectations and not try to feel like we're caging them. Because you try to cage them, they'll take off in the other direction. But if if you look at allowing someone to be who they are and allowing things to unfold, it's an important, you know, um, energy. Because then rather than having expectations and feeling like they're caged or that they're not meeting up to something. Because when when we focus on who someone is not being, we just, our energy grows that. And that's kind of this two of ones and two of swords for you is that how you can, if I'm like, I want to be with them, that wanting energy is a not having energy. And when we focus on that, we push them farther away too. Because we're focusing on not having. When you focus your energy on thinking about all the amazing things you love about them, what you do love about them, remembering the times you did have with them and having gratitude for those times. That tells the universe, I really enjoyed being with Lisa, right? Was Lisa right? Um, and I love this about them. I love this. I'm so grateful for these opportunities that I've had not focusing. And I want them to come back. It's like, nope, nope, we just went to lack energy and pushing them away and more not having, right? When we're like, you know, creator, if they are um what's in a alignment for me and what's for my best and that's best for us to be together, I give that to you. I trust that you're going to bring her back to me, bring us together in the perfect timing, the perfect way, right? In the meantime, I'm just going to focus on what I loved about them. And that energy allows the giving, allows the drawing to come together. But if I focus on want to need that, again, that's not having energy, which brings us more not having, right? So hopefully that makes sense um for you. But I like that it's no longer just a no, it's a, I don't know. So there you go. Right, Alphonse. Hopefully that made sense there. So many blessings to you. All right, all right, all right. All right. And then Kathy Clark, hello, mama. I uh didn't see that you were Cynthia's mother. So um, I should have recognized the name. She did give me your name and I'm looking forward to receiving your email for the reading that she um has for you. So just reach out to me um at that email address. It's in the list in the description box too. So for your uh reading that she bought, you can ask all the questions you want. We'll dive deep into things. Or if you want to look at my uh the link um for the readings, you can see what um what type of reading you want. Want to pass life, you want a um birthday reading, you want um relationship reading, whatever it may be. Um, you know, make sure because uh it it doesn't expire until I expire. But then I'll just visit you in your dreams. But uh, so I look forward to doing that personal reading for you. And um so you want to know any for today, any messages for you today? Let's take a look. So for these, these are just one to card uh readings, but your other one will be an in depth, deep, deep reading. All right. So let's see, what does spirit wants you to know right now? All right. So we've got here, you've got the ace of wands and the five of cups energy here. And this energy that comes in with this, the ace of wands is like a new spark. It's a new energy. It's a new um call it like an expansive energy. The five of cups normally has someone standing there with three cups spilt and two cups behind them. The three cups spilt represent like sorrowful energy, lower vibrational energy, any of the um emotions related to fear, which can be anger and resentment and sorrow and, you know, all those lower vibrational, we don't want to spend too much time talking about them. Because the five, the number of change and transformation does show here that it's like, it just takes awareness of those two cups behind us. That's the power of emotional choice. It tells us every moment is a choice. It's a choice of the story. It's a choice of the emotion, which this one is focusing on. Choice of our energy, the choice of our physical action. Every moment is lower vibration, higher vibration. There's no wrong choice. There's just different choices with different experiences and different outcomes with that. Of course, when we focus on lower vibration, we get more of that, we grow it. But I love that the five of cups is this energy of change that when I'm done feeling an emotion and I'm tired of feeling a certain way, I can choose a different one. I can choose a higher vibration if I want. Unconditional love, joy, laughter, gratitude, peace, you know, play, um empowerment, expansion. You know, that's wonderful energy. But you get to choose and no one gets to choose it for you. You know, uh, we're close as humans, we're taught, people make me feel a certain way. And of course, that happens when we're younger, right? We're growing up and mommy, you know, you made mommy sad, you made daddy mad. And so as children, we think, oh, I am empower empowered to control other people's emotions. No, it's not. That's a lie. It's a a power move, right? Um, because I get to choose how I feel, even though we've been given a lot of opinion that when this happens, this is how you're supposed to feel. When that happens, this is how you're supposed to feel when that happens. And so we took on those opinions. We reinforced them. It became our own opinion. Then it became our habit to feel a certain way. And then it became our reaction over time where it doesn't even feel like we're making emotional choices. Something happens and I feel this way. But this ace of wands with this five of cups is this empowerment, like I get to choose how I feel about something. And I feel like this is what um, you know, spirit and your guides want you to know. There's this amazing empowerment that I don't have to feel any way that I don't want to feel. And theoretically, you know, I could choose to feel joy about whatever comes my way. Because when I have these, all these opinions that I've grown up with that have been reinforced, that when that happens, I'm supposed supposed to feel that way. I'm afraid of what comes next because I feel like I'm a puppet on strings. If this comes, then I have to act like this. I have to feel this way. If this comes, this is how I have to feel. If that comes, this is how I have to feel. But when we realize I don't have to feel any way that I don't want to feel. And we start to question our feelings and we step into our empowerment around it, I get to like, you know what? Um, I'm going to choose a different way of feeling. And it's great because I remember when I read, I forget who wrote it, but it was this, they said that it's not the circumstances that determine how it impacts us, including our emotions. Because otherwise, everyone who went through a situation would all feel exactly the same. But you have people that feel this way, you have people that feel this way, you have people that feel this way. So they're saying it's not the circumstances that determine it. It's the person going through the circumstances. And there's such empowerment that comes into that. The power of emotional choice. The ace of wands is also whatever energy I focus on is what I draw to me, right? So I can focus as much as I can on gratitude and higher vibration. I draw things that match that to come in. Um, or I can choose lower vibration and draw that in. Again, there's no judgment from spirit. They're like, yeah, there's no right or wrong. There's just a bunch of different choices and a bunch of different experiences. What do you want to do? Where do you want to go? We're along for the ride. We don't care. You know, it's your adventure. They're following our lead. So I like that empowerment coming in there. So hopefully that resonates for you, Kathy. And that's what they have for you right now. So I look forward to hearing from you. Many blessings to you. Alrighty. Then up next, we have Lolita. So Lolita, let me get your timestamp here. All right. So Lolita, you'd like guidance with the situation that's on your mind. All right. Let's see what we have here. So guidance, okay, boom. So guidance, um, the situation on your mind. All right. Yeah, it looks like you're like on a uh decision at a decision point here with the two of swords. It's like standing at a a fork in the road and going, well, which way do I want to go? And the two of swords uh with the ace of pentacles, there is this opportunity to have a new experience going on out there. And if you're, I'm not sure what I want to do, the two of swords represents this inner conflict between your head and your heart. Your mind wants to go this way, the same old, same old, out of fear. You know, it it's like, this is what's expected. This is what everyone thinks. This is what um, if I don't do this, people are going to think I'm stupid or I'm going to get rejected. Whatever we fear, not choosing with the mind going like, this is how we keep in people's good graces, right? Then the heart's like, I don't care. This is where I want to go. This is my joy. This is where I want to leave. And I feel like if you close your eyes and open your heart, you're going to get the answer to what this or this, and you're going to want to go this way. You don't want to go the same old, same old, do what you've always done and get what you've always gotten. This energy is about following your heart and it's a new opportunity. It's a new direction and it feels a little scary because it's a decision that you haven't made before. But I feel like you're sick and tired of choosing the other way. You're like, I don't want to go through. I've been down that road over and over again, and I know that's not where I want to end up. So I'm going to take this road. And I feel like that's the energy that's coming in for you right now. So hopefully that helps Lolita. That is what they have for you right now. So many blessings to you. All right. All right. Then we have XO coming up. So XO, you are up. And your name is Danielle. Hey Danielle, as well. Uh, and so you're the girl who worked, I'm the girl who worked for free. You quit now starting a business. You'd love to hear what you think. Oh, okay. I'd love that. Yeah, I remember that. So it's like, I've been working for free for these people. And now it's time for you to start your own business. Let's see what spirit wants you to know here. All right, all right, boom, boom. So the nine of swords and the seven of cups. Ah, no, yeah, very, some fears going on, right? The nine of swords. But that's the end of the fears here. And the seven of cups is so many possibilities that you can do here. Um, the nine of swords just represent like it's the nightmare and insomnia card, but it's also the um, a lot of fears related to what people will think and this and that. And you know, all this opinion of the outside world that kind of scares us because we've been so used to trying to do what everyone else wanted us to do. But this nine of swords is like, I'm done. I'm just exhausted. It's exhausting trying to please everyone and live up to everyone's expectations. What do I want? I'm done, you know, I'm ending this, trying to please everyone and I'm going to go in the direction and do what I want to do. And the seven of cups is like all these seven cups. It's like, what do I want to do? Um, and it's interesting because when we're always doing what everyone else wants to do, we don't, we kind of don't know what our favorite is, what our heart desires. Because we always sacrifice it for other people. And there's this wonderful rebellion that's happening for you here, right? Where you're deciding, I want to do something. I want to go in these directions. I want to do this. And the seven of cups is you get to decide. There's no wrong choice. But um it's about following your heart, get out of your head, follow your heart. Where's your joy leading you? How do you want to do it? Not, oh, I think I'm supposed to do it, blah, blah, blah. It's, where's your heart leading? Follow that joy, follow that where you're going there. Because when you're doing that, your heart will lead you to success when you're trying to and living, this feeling of living, when you follow your restrictive thoughts, um, these fears, then you end up existing and you end up trapped. Um, like we were with that working for free. And now you're like, I'm being able to express myself. And as you follow your joy, you will get reward for that. Um, and you'll see that. So follow your heart, right? I feel like is the big message, yeah. Live your dreams, even on the bottom of the deck, you get the nine of cups, which is like the living the dream come true energy. So I like that for you. All right. So that's what they have for you XO Danielle. Uh, so many blessings to you. Hopefully that helps. And then last but not leastly, we have Tim De La Jam. So hello, hello, sir. I know, being respectful to my elders. I don't know. Are you an older than me? I'm 58. I'll call your brother instead of sir. Hey, brother. Oh, you did. You said brother too. So that's good. So nothing pressing today. Maybe just go with the general, you know, just trying to be social. I like that. All right. So let's see, what does spirit have for Tim? What do they want you to know right now? Alrighty, okay, all right, here we go. So you do have the two of cups. So here's that relationship energy that's here. So there is relationship potential out there. The five of swords is a transformation of energy. I like this. Two birds fighting. But um, I like this energy. It's a a bit of a feisty energy, which yeah, you definitely need someone who's feisty, someone who um, you know, starts off with some bantering back and forth that can dish it out and uh can take it too. And that's what I like. I I feel like there's the someone that you meet where there's this little fiery going on between the two of you guys where, you know, you're like, hey, and she's like, well, hey. And you're like, da, 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 da. You say your little, your your little uh funny thing and they do a little, you know, kind of sarcastic funny, but it's like this wonderful bantering. It's that kind where people, there's like this undertow of really strong attraction. And someone walks by and go, you guys get a room, you know, because there's that strong energy that people are picking up and you guys feel it too. But it starts off in this playful, you know, where it's just really um, you know, I love it because it's so fiery. And I feel that's what you need. And and because it's someone that can really match you in your wit. And I feel like that is such an important thing. Um, because you you need someone with a great sense of humor. Um, because you have a wide range of humor. You go from dark, dark humor to really hilarious, right? Uh, you your energy reminds me of my Sagittarius father because and and I have that same. And my brother, both of all of us, uh, all three of us have the sense of humor that, you know, it's dark, but it's also hilarious. Uh, and so we like laughing about a lot of things and so I like that for you. And I feel like that is something that is there for you. And so just know, just be on the lookout for some sassy, some sassy sass sassiness because it's headed in your way. So I like that for you, Tim. And that's what they have for you right now. So many blessings to you. And thank you guys, uh, everyone for your patience in getting to your readings. After I sign off here in a moment, I will grab all these, throw them into a pin to comment so you can have your uh timestamp and go directly to your reading. And I will be back tomorrow morning at 11 AM out in time. So if you'd like to join me then, that's almost about 12 hours from now. So um I'd be happy to see you guys tomorrow. Until then, Until then, sleep well, enjoy this full moon energy. If you're dreaming, uh enjoy these full moon dreams. And until then, remember every second of every day of your life that you truly are eternally and unconditionally loved by the mother and the father of all things, our creator. And of course, I love you too. So until I see you again, much love. Hang in there. Take care of yourself. Make sure to have fun. Because spirit's been asking, why are we being so serious, right? Alright, I love you guys. We'll see you soon.